I would like to call out the support of September 20, 2022. We need to order clear announcements. Clear if there are police stand where have any issues that come through. We in order. I wish we could pay attention.
I would like to thank you for your service today. In my office this evening, Mr. Chandler, so great to the world of papers. Sir view and says the city. We pray that our being not a recruit for the benefit of this city. Thank you of our council, our mayor, our department heads, all employees of our city, and our citizens. Just as a way of blessing can be taken.
Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, I would like to welcome our spouse, Chief Shipp. You, I'm going to call your name. Please stand so everyone can see who are Jayden and Division, Zed Pat Langdale, Colby Crenshaw, Sarah Van Warr, Maxine, Sarah Van Warr, Warren, Martin Burns, and James. Anyone? And everybody, please applaud. You may be seated, and I ask that you do not leave to get a chance to take a picture of me tonight. Okay. Council has had time to review the minutes from the September 8th, 2022, 2022 regular meetings. Are there any additions or deletions? If there are none, the minutes are approved for acclamation. We're going to go down now to agenda items three, ordinance and resolution. Consideration of an ordinance to amend Chapter 6, Alcohol Beverage, Article 2, License, Section 6 through 36, Wine Only Establishments, Wine Tasted, Retail Tobacco Stores of Code of Ordinance for the City of Allosa, and to add provisions for malt beverage only establishments. Second reading by Mr. Matt Martin.
Thank you, Mayor Protam. We covered this in a good bit of detailed discussion two weeks ago. As you said, this is the second reading of an ordinance amendment to the alcoholic beverages chapter of the city's code of ordinances. The proposal is to add a nuance to the wine-only establishments license that we already grant for alcoholic beverages, and that is to add a possibility of beer only to that provision, but for only the downtown Valdosta Entertainment District. So just that geographic area and adding beer only. This has no effect on distilled spirits or liquor and has no effect on the other parts of the city. We covered this two weeks ago. I can go through more details again, but it's pretty simple and straightforward in your packet, and I'll be glad to answer any questions you may have.
Are there any questions? By hearing none, who would entertain a motion by council?
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve the consideration of the ordinance to amend Chapter 6.
Second.
There any discussions on the motion? There's none. I ask by raising hand who are in favor of this question. Calls. Motion carries for one. Going Article 4, bids, contracts, agreements, expedition, expenditures. If there are no objections of council, Agenda Items 4A through 4J will be considered to be under a consent agenda. By hearing none, we turn this over to you, Mr. Greg.
Thank you, ma'am. I have a spreadsheet that I created. Basically, it sums all, all the purchases up on two sheets there. That's basically all the numbers that are out of the bids. It's just a summarization of that, and I'll talk to you about that in a second. Last year, you know, we thought we were crazy buying police cars for forty-nine thousand, or thirty-nine thousand dollars. It's still crazy. Nothing has changed. Availability is still tough, but it looks like we're going to get the cars that are in the budget this year. Price is thirty-nine thousand dollars or so apiece, so they have gone up and they have stayed up, just like pickup trucks. We actually put forty thousand dollars in each item to, and thought, you know, we would cover ourselves there. Overall, on the, the second page of the spreadsheet, if you take it at face value, we're fifty-four thousand over budget. That's a really good number on the information we were given from our vendors trying to set the budget numbers, but if you put the buyback value in on the two backups that we're buying tonight, that actually puts us fifty thousand to the good, and that is cash money that we will get back in five years. So it's really tough doing the budget and, you know, trying not to look crazy that we walked in here with low numbers, but that is what we're at now. It's still chips, it's still raw materials, it's availability. We never come this early. We have to because we have to get our, our purchase orders to the dealers so that they can get them sent to the manufacturers. They have two or three days of order, and it has to be on our PO. If they send after that, we don't get vehicles. They will not take the dealers' POs. They have to have the City of Allosa POs. So some of the stuff we may not get for eight months, but we have to get our documentation submitted so that we can get that in. Some of this stuff could actually be a year. We just don't know. We have to be ready on our end, but we're probably not going to receive much of this stuff until February, March, even down to June of next year. So that's, we're still in that kind of crazy situation. So with that being said, I will go through each bid. If you have questions on anything as we go through them, I'll pause in between. All right. The first bid for consideration is number 6, 2223. It is for thirteen Dodge Chargers for the Police Department. They currently have five hundred and twenty thousand dollars in the budget, which they did meet their number. We had forty thousand in the budget, and they actually came in at thirty-nine, nine, seventy-seven. So that was in the budget. We, their life cycles are due. They have, I don't know exactly how many cars, but I know they have well over probably a hundred and fifty. We're replacing thirteen that are old. You know, realize they run twelve hours a shift, and their, their hours are up, the maintenance are going up. I have a list of all the vehicles that we're replacing. These were all in the council-approved motor pool budget. We received bids on September thirteenth. The low bid that came in that met spec was from Cas Birch, and it was for thirty-nine thousand, nine, seventy-seven each, or a total of five hundred and nineteen thousand, seven hundred and one dollars. Again, we had forty thousand budgeted for each vehicle last year. That price from Alabama was thirty-nine thousand, four hundred dollars. So they've actually gone up just a little bit. Again, it's all because of the volatile market of the automotive industry. I would recommend that mayor and council approve the low bid meeting specification of Cas Birch in the amount of five hundred and nineteen thousand, seven hundred and one dollars, and allow the Police Department to proceed with the purchase. Any questions? Number two is bid number eight dash twenty-two dash twenty-three. This is for Chevrolet Tahoe for the Police Department as well. The Training Department or Division, the Police Department, needs to replace an existing vehicle. That number is sixteen twenty-one, which is a two thousand six Ford Explorer SUV. This vehicle is budgeted in the current motor pool budget. Seal bids were received on September thirteenth of this year. The bid, low bid meeting specification, came from Brandon Motor Company in the amount of forty-seven thousand dollars. The price we did pay last year for the same vehicle was thirty-nine thousand, eight hundred dollars, and I will recommend that mayor and council approve the bid of Brandon Motor Company in the amount of forty-seven thousand dollars. Number three is bid number nine, twenty-two twenty-three. It is for a half-ton extended cab truck with a long box. This truck is for the Public Works Department, the Maintenance Motor Pool Division. It will replace an old, older vehicle, number fifteen seventeen, which is a two thousand model. It is in the motor pool approved council budget. We received bids on September thirteenth. Low bid meeting specification was Wade Ford, an amount of forty-four thousand, three hundred dollars and sixteen cents. The last similar truck purchased was thirty-five thousand, three hundred, which was last year. I recommend that mayor and council approve the bid of Wade Ford in the amount of forty-four thousand, three hundred and sixteen dollars, and allow the department to proceed with the purchase. No questions. Next bid is bid number ten, twenty-two twenty-three. This is for two half-ton regular cab trucks for the Police Department and Utilities Department. The sort, uh, Support Service Division, the Police Department, and the Meter Reading Division of Utilities Department need to replace two old trucks. The current trucks are old, have high mileage and rising maintenance cost. The trucks to be replaced are fourteen oh one, which is a two thousand seven truck, and fifteen seventy-six, which is a nineteen ninety-seven truck. We received bids on September thirteenth of this year. The low bid meeting specification came in from Wade Ford. The last similar truck purchased was thirty-five thousand, three hundred dollars, and I'm going to recommend that we approve the bid of Wade Ford in the amount of eighty-one thousand, zero, thirty-four, and thirty-two cents, and allow the departments to proceed with the purchase. The next one is bid eleven dash twenty-two dash twenty-three. This is two one-ton utility trucks, body trucks with lift gates on them for the Engineering Department and the Public Works Department. The Street Maintenance Division of the Engineering Department and the Right-Away Maintenance Division, the Public Works Department, need to replace two existing trucks. They are seventeen forty-seven, which is a two thousand year model, and fifteen fifty-three, which is a two thousand five half-ton truck. Both have been in service for a long time, and the mileage, functionality, and maintenance costs have risen. Both trucks are in the motor pool, approved by council for the current year. Seal bids were received on September thirteenth. The last similar truck purchased was two years ago, and it was forty-one thousand, two hundred and ninety-five dollars. I'm going to recommend that we, mayor and council approve the bid meeting specification of Wade Ford in the amount of one hundred and thirty-nine thousand, six hundred and fifty-two dollars, and allow the departments to proceed with the purchase. Next one is bid twelve dash twenty-two dash twenty-three. This is for the Fire Prevention Division of the Fire Department. They need to replace number sixteen oh nine, which is a two thousand six model Ford Expedition. It has high mileage, age, and rising maintenance cost as well. It is being replaced, the SUV is actually being replaced by a half-ton crew cab truck that will have a lockable bed cover so that they can put materials and stuff in there, and they're secured in the bed. It is in the current year approved motor pool budget. Forty thousand dollars was put in there for it. The last truck similar that we purchased was two years ago for twenty-nine thousand, nine hundred and eighty-seven dollars. I recommend that mayor and council approve the low bid of Cas Birch in the amount of forty-four thousand, six hundred and eighty-seven, and allow the Fire Department to proceed with the purchase. We're getting there. Bid number thirteen dash twenty-two dash twenty-three. This is for a four-wheel drive backhoe with a quick connect utility coupler for the Public Works Department is bid number thirteen twenty-two twenty-three. The Cemetery Division needs to replace a backhoe that's due for buyback. A buyback, just to familiarize you, again with it, is in five years, we will sell this, this backhoe back for a guaranteed amount. For this one, it's fifty-five thousand dollars. We also carry a five-year bumper-to-bumper warranty on that vehicle or the backhoe for the service of it. So for five years, we'll have warranty on that bumper-to-bumper. It is in the current year budget, approved by mayor and council. Bids were received on September thirteenth, two thousand twenty-two. The bid meeting spec of Flint Equipment came in at a hundred and fifty-four thousand, nine hundred and sixty-eight dollars. It has a guaranteed fifty-five thousand dollar buyback, which is a net price of ninety-nine thousand, nine hundred and sixty-eight dollars. This would be the recommendation of Flint Equipment in that amount to allow them to proceed with that purchase.
I have a question about that.
Okay.
I was just looking at you say, we're getting this mainly for the cemetery?
Yes, ma'am.
Because I was just noticing, you know, we don't have much, to me, I didn't understand that we had much activity going on at the cemetery. So like if we had another one of these backhoes somewhere else, I mean, are we doing that much work over at the cemetery that we need another?
They actually use this to, I believe, dig the graves in it, and it has a special bucket on it, but again, it was in the, the mayor and council approved budget. The five-year buyback is due.
Okay.
Meaning if we're going to get what they guaranteed us five years ago, we have to turn it in. We can keep it and lose that money, but if you take what the cost of running that backhoe for five years, and we've had it, it's going to be lower than, than rental for, for a five-year period.
I was just thinking, we might not even need one since we don't have that much activity, but okay, I see what you're saying, this the timeframe for the.
The timeframe, yes, ma'am. And again, that puts us in a new piece of equipment for five years that has that warranty. So if an engine runs, if an engine blows up, it's going to cost us a lot of money.
I got you, I understand. Okay. Okay, go ahead.
I was just going to say, council, I think you're probably thinking about, we don't have a lot of vacant parcels and lots that let us sell. They're all sold, but we are continuing to dig a lot in the cemetery. They're just, all the lots, for the most part, have been sold unless we buy them back from someone who changes their mind. So still a lot of need for a backhoe in the cemetery.
Yeah, and they still do other work with it. It's not just for digging those holes, they're using it to move branches and things like that as well.
Thank you.
Okay. The next one is bid fourteen twenty-two twenty-three. This is for the Stormwater Division of the Engineering Department. It also has a backhoe that's coming off a buyback. It is in the current council-approved motor pool budget as well. Same machine, basically, the bucket's a little different, so that's the difference in the pricing there. So I'm going to recommend that we go with Flint Equipment that met the spec for one hundred and fifty-one thousand, eight hundred and fifty dollars. There's a fifty-five thousand dollar buyback guaranteed in five years, so that's a net price of ninety-six thousand, eight hundred and fifty dollars. Bid number sixteen twenty-two twenty-three. This is for a Bobcat steer loader. This is for one of the smaller machines you see. It can get in tight places. This, I think this, the Utilities Department is using this, so they're out at the, one of the wastewater, at the Mud Creek Wastewater Treatment Plant. They have a current machine for zero-one-one. It was purchased in two thousand and three, so it has basically lived its life. This is in the, the motor pool budget as well. Seal bids were open on September thirteenth. Volume Power Sports, who is now a Valdosta business, so we now have a, a Bobcat dealer in town, proposed a price of sixty-four thousand, four hundred and sixty-eight dollars and thirteen cents. The last machine we bought like this was in two thousand and thirteen, and the price was right at thirty-five thousand dollars. So again, that's just one of those, part of the economy and what we're dealing with. So I would recommend that mayor and council approve the bid of Volume Power Sports in the amount of sixty-four thousand, four hundred and sixty-eight dollars and thirteen cents, and allow the Utility Department to proceed with the purchase. Last but not least, bid number eighteen twenty-two twenty-three. This is for a roll-off truck with a tarp system used by the Public Works Department for the Sanitation Division. This is a truck that's responsible for the, the dump, the big, long roll-offs without tops on them that we carry out to, where they're building houses or doing trash cleanups or whatever. I think ten-yard is the, the usual one, that's the biggest one, I think. We haul on this truck. The customer calls, we deliver it to them, they fill it up, we pick it up and dump it and charge them for that. The current model is a two thousand two model that we're replacing. This is in Splo State Funds, and bids were open on September thirteenth of this year. I don't have a previous price because that's a twenty-year-old record, and I'm only required for seven years, but I think I've got ten, but I don't have twenty. I would recommend that council approve the low bid of four-start freightliner in the amount of one hundred and ninety-one thousand, fifty-one dollars, and allow the Public Works Department to proceed with the purchase.
I just want to ask this one question. It was just something you said, and I'm just kind of getting it clear in my head again. I remember you saying something like at the beginning, you said, we might not get all these now, but the reason we are trying to get it in now is because of the fact we want to get these prices.
Some of the dealerships don't know when the manufacturer who makes the cars is going to say, we need your paperwork. Okay, so that could be next week, it could be in November. So again, these are all approved funds that you approved back in, in June, but we just have to have our POs ready because there's going to be a very small window of time when these awarded dealers are going to say, we need your, we need your purchase orders. And I'm already going to have them to them, but they can't, they can't order the cars until they have their manufacturer said, we need your POs. When those are in and that day comes, they're going to cut off production. Somebody wants to order a car in February, and that production order has been done, they're not going to get their cars.
Okay. The reason I'm asking is because of the fact that, you know, how the prices and everything are going up, and I hear a lot's going to be happening. Some of these we may not, would that also lock us in at that price as well? They might come back and say, we thought we could get it?
We're locked in for this one. Yeah, these are, because we're not retail, we're the government, so we kind of get some price breaks.
Uh-huh.
And so once, yes, ma'am, once they're, they're locked in for these prices, we should not, I would not think we were going to come back to you and say, hey, we need some additional money. So let me back up, but I feel ninety-nine point nine percent sure that we're, we're good in this.
Okay.
Miss, Miss Mayor. Sorry about that. I make a motion to approve Agenda Items 4A through 4J as presented.
Second.
Mayor, council, I would suggest that the spreadsheet, the records, the numbers, the agenda items.
Yeah, like I said, that's kind of a cumulative total of what.
We have a second. Now we, if we show a hand who are in favor of the request presented by Mr. Greg around items A through J.
Thank you.
Thank you. Motion carries. Before we go to items five, I would like to announce we have a very new person, okay, in the Utilities Department, Bradley Ivey. Now I'm going to announce what you're going to be doing. Did I announce your name right?
Air, it's actually air, it's air, but you're, that's close enough, and nobody gets it right.
Okay. Consideration of the request for payment of an invoice for the registered repair of the water line at the Guest Road Water Tribute Plan, presented by Mr. Brad.
Very good. Good evening, Mayor Protam, and council, city manager.
Evening.
City managers. This is, on September sixteenth, twenty twenty-one, there was a failure of, on our twenty-four-inch main, water main. It's the raw water main that comes from the wells. Occurred at thirty-eight sixty-three Guest Road at the water plant. After examination, it was discovered that the ductal lining mechanical joints, fittings were deteriorated due to the sulfuric acid injections, which adjusts the pH in, in the water. The water main was corroded due to the chemicals injecting into the main and, and process to adjust the quality of the water. Due to the failure of the installation, due to the failure of the water main, the system required an emergency repair and bypass installation to continue to, to provide water throughout the city. The emergency bypass and the twenty-four-inch main failure provided continued flow of water and allowed the repair of the ruptured water main. Facts and issues, due to the poor conditions of the existing mechanical fittings and the significance of the raw water intake, to make the repair, a local contractor was needed to install the emergency repair and bypass to allow the repairs. The twenty-four-inch main was repaired using HDPE pipe and fittings because of deterioration and failure of the main. The repair required the removal and replacement of the ruptured twenty-four-inch main and excavation, compaction, and resurfacing of the area. The project began around September sixteenth, twenty twenty-one, and was completed on December thirty-first, twenty twenty-one. The agenda item is submitted to provide details of the repair, as well as the authorized payment to RPI Underground, Inc., in the amount of two hundred and fourteen thousand, three hundred and eighty-seven dollars and fourteen cents for the emergency repairs. Options, we recommend the authorization of the payment of this in the amount of two fourteen, three eighty-seven, and fourteen cents to RPI Underground for this emergency repair. This emergency repair was, was necessary due to the deterioration of the twenty-four-inch main. The, the larger portion of this emergency repair was completed in December twenty twenty-one. At that time, the decision was made to pay the contractor a total, at the total completion of the project. However, completion is taking longer than expected due to some of the parts and equipment that's been ordered. Therefore, the staff is requesting the payment, which includes the bypass of one twenty-four-inch main. Any questions or?
Yes. Because I would kind of remember this with RPI, because I was looking at that, their name had changed, and they, they finished, they completed most of that emergency work, right? That they had to do was emergently.
They did.
And that was back in last year, right?
It's December of last year.
So they're having to finish it up now.
They, we, if you can imagine, the raw water line coming from the well system out there at the water plant comes to the plant, and when it comes, it's got two lines that comes up and feeds the plant. We have train one and train two. One of those trains, well, actually, both of them are deteriorating. We were able to shut one side down, shut them both down when we did the repair, but we only repaired one side.
Okay.
We're waiting for materials. Some of the fittings are stainless steel, and it, very long delivery times on them because they're a large diameter. So we didn't want to make the contractor wait, continue to wait. It's been a year that he's, he's, you know, borne the cost of materials, labor expense. We wanted to pay for this portion while we finished, before we finished the, the rest of it.
Okay. So the one I'm looking at, like it should have been two jobs. He did the emergency job that we had a problem right there. We did that, we paid for it, but then there's, this other thing that's there too.
Well, there was an imminent leak, so it had to be, it had, we had to stop the, the leak, and, and we, we put in the bypass, but it, we still have deteriorated parts in, in another side of the train that enters the, the plant. We, one side is fixed, the other side still is not, but it's shut down. So we have to, we're waiting on parts to repair that, and it doesn't make any sense to make the contractor continue to wait to, to pay, you know, him for his services.
But the service is done, so we're going to still owe him when the parts come here?
We have, we have a small portion left on the, on the other twenty-four-inch that, for the, for the bypass, I mean, for the train two.
Right.
That he's not completing, we're waiting for parts, so.
And we will have to pay him for that part?
Correct.
So this is not, this amount is not part of that little part we're waiting on, right?
Correct.
That's what I was trying to find, because that's what I was just trying to see, it looked like it was two different jobs, an emergency job and then a possible probable.
Well, it's, the entire job is replacing, because all the, all those parts together deteriorated because of the, the acid, and we put the acid in there, add the acid because of the high pH, it, it balances the, for the quality of the water. I'm sorry.
You go ahead.
Oh. So the entire repair could not be done, and so it, it's, we decided, because of the length of time, to break it up into portions. It's not, we didn't feel like it was fair to, for the contractor to wait for his money.
So it's not really two jobs, it's one job.
It's only one job, it's just, it makes sense.
Right now.
Well, we're still waiting for parts, so it makes sense.
Do we know how long that wait is?
It's hard to tell, it's hard to tell. It's a specialty, it's a stainless steel part, and it's a large diameter.
Right.
Some of these parts are, there's a year out sometimes on some of these parts. It's, it's crazy, you wouldn't think so.
So are we keeping an eye on this piece?
We're, we're...
Make sure?
Yes. On a weekly basis, we check in with the contractor to see, "Hey, have you heard anything?"
On the tray itself, the flow, are we, are we able to make sure it's not going to bust on us?
Yeah, I mean, we've, we've, we've made the necessary repairs for the bypass and one of the trains. So we, we can bypass that whole area if need be, but we have train one fixed so that we still get one side that goes to the plant to treat the water. So we, we're not going to be, if we have another emergency, we've got a way to bypass that. But we still have the other part that has to be repaired. It's a small section.
And to be clear, so when they come back up again, we are only going to be paying them for the part we are waiting on again. They're going to come back with, this is the balance for the balance. This is the balance of the work to be done, and this is the balance that you owe us.
That's correct. The bypass was paid, in this cost, the bypass in train one, which is, if you can imagine the raw water line coming to the plant and it splits off.
I understand.
So one side of that, and then bypass. We got, and one other side of that, of that, that has to be, still yet to be repaired.
Okay, Brad.
And the final, the councilman, the final invoice will also have labor attached, just not the part. It'll be the labor with that, because they hadn't put it in yet, so it'll still be the labor and the part for that, I just want to make that clear.
So all we paying him for now is just the parts? The labor that they've done already, we got to pay them later?
Yeah, because they haven't done this part of the labor yet, so when we get the part, they still have to do the, do the replacement. So there will be, there will be the part and the labor as part of that. So I didn't want to mislead you with just the part.
Train, train one and the bypass is being, so if you imagine it in three parts, two parts are completed, and the payment for that, those two parts.
Okay.
So...
Is there any other questions? Here we now, we have a...
RPI again.
I make a motion to authorize the payment of $214,387.14 on the portion of the project that has been done so far.
Your second.
Second.
Third. It's RPI, right? I said, I was, let's split that, that we were saying, I just didn't hear the name, but yeah, that's for that company, RPI. It's okay.
All those in favor, I should have a pen. Motion carries. Before you leave, Mr. Brad, everyone, please, that's applauding, because we applaud everyone that's that came up with these new positions, let's be in order and let's applaud them. I'm going to move to 5B, consideration request to close a portion of, I think I'm seeing this, Miramar Street by Mr. Ben O'Dowd, city engineer, who we're presenting, and he's new also, we've had your applause.
Okay. Please be nice to me still, though. Good evening, mayor and council. I'll begin with a little bit of history and background on this. Attached is a petition requesting that the portion of Miramar Street south of Baytree Drive be vacated and closed to facilitate a proposed multifamily development. The initial request was received from Innovate Engineering on June 28th, 2022. The proposed closure would accommodate the development and the surrounding property into a multifamily residential development. As a refresher, this is in association with the rezoning case that was heard last week, and that rezoning was approved. I have an attachment here that shows kind of a, an overview of the lots. If you'll pan through, there's, it should be a map. And this should clarify the portion that's requested to be closed. Within that highlighted area that's labeled, I believe, 4.9 acres, the portion of Miramar to the right of Baytree Drive is the portion that's being requested to be closed. The applicant received, or has the signed petition that has the signatures of all of the adjacent property owners that would utilize this road. A point of concern may be any future connection through that open area to the right there. That's a creek, and there would be no future interconnection potential there. So we checked that. Facts and issues, all the properties which would be affected by the closure of this portion of Miramar Street are owned by one property owner who has signed the petition as required. A public notice of the petition was circulated in the Valdosta Daily Times on September 2nd, 2022, and September hearing notice sign was posted at the south, south side of the intersection of Miramar Street and Baytree Drive on September 8th, 2022. Our office received no calls with any concerns or questions regarding this closure. This petition was circulated to all relevant city departments as well as area utility providers which may have facilities within the right-of-way. The portion of Miramar Street which is requested to be closed currently contains power, stormwater, and city of Valdosta utilities. Please see the attached comments from all the departments and relevant service providers. The engineering department recommends that a utility easement be retained in place of the existing right-of-way should it be closed. The engineering department has also notified the developer that they will be responsible for any and all damages done to the utilities during the construction. We have two options here. Option one is approve the request as noted, and option two is do not approve the request. The engineering department recommends that we approve the request as noted. Any questions?
Do you have the approximate acreage of the amount?
We do not, but usually the, a surveyor would be hired to describe and depict the two portions of the road, because that, well, in this case, it would be, there's three property owners and then one on the other side, so it would be four portions of the road, not all equal in size, which would be split to each of the adjacent property owners, and a surveyor would describe that.
We may need a flat that should be preserved, that utility easement is not there.
Okay.
That's what I was thinking about. So if the council's in favor of this, you have to pause to this, close and dispose of the right-of-way according to the laws and regulations. Closing a road, not disposing of it, so we just...
Disposing of the what now?
Of the road.
Closure of the right-of-way as well as disposing of it. Again, I'm here if anybody has any questions or concerns.
Is there anybody in the audience in favor of the closing of this portion of the
Bill Kent with Innovate Engineering, 2214 North Patterson. I'm here on behalf of the developers and owners. I don't, I don't know the acreage, excuse me, but they are closing on the properties, and once that's done, then we will prepare the quitclaim easement and deeds back to the city, so.
So anyone here who's speaking to the council, Miramar Street? Here we now, we have a motion?
May I make a motion to request the closure and disposing of the portion of Miramar Street, I guess the right-of-way included?
Second.
Is there any discussion of a motion? If there's none, we have a show of favor against the favorite petition question. Motion carries. This time, we're going to go down to the favorite part, citizens to be heard. This is the citizens-to-be-heard portion of the meeting. We ask that you come forward and state your name and address so that we may have that for the record. Our policy requires that you stay under three minutes so that others have time to be heard. Please, there are all comments to council as a whole, and do not attempt to engage the individual members of council in debate. If it is this council's policy to follow through you on your concern additionally, we ask that any groups that want to address the council designate one spokesperson to represent the group and their comments. Again, this will ensure that others have time to be heard. Have been said this, have been said that, are there any citizens wishing to be heard? Here we now, we're going to move on. Our city management report, Mr. Mark.
Thank you, mayor. I will, I do not have a report for this evening, so we can move forward once again.
Okay, before we go to item eight, I would like everyone to acknowledge and say happy belated birthday to Councilman Ben O'Dowd, who turned...
Andy Gibbs.
Andy, you had a birthday too?
Same day.
I'm so sorry, you weren't on Facebook. And Councilman Andy Gibbs.
We're twins.
I want to make them tell their age, just when they're 60.
Forty-five.
Oh, you ain't even...
Baby child, baby child.
Wait a minute, wait a minute. Let's back up.
Tim had one, yeah.
Honor attorney Tim, attorney general's birthday, so we got three birthdays.
Wait a minute, Mark's was Monday.
I just...
I'm still older than all of you, so.
Put together.
I'm so sorry, we got birthdays everywhere. Everybody in the month of September, happy birthday.
Happy birthday.
Now, council comments, are there any councils that have anything to say? We're going to start from my left with Councilman Gibbs.
Yeah, if you don't have anything going on, on Tuesdays and Thursdays, the Miracle League of Valdosta has started back again. We are actually playing tonight, I'm here instead of there, but we have been fortunate to grow again and get back to numbers kind of where we've been at, so we are playing on Tuesdays from 6:00 to 8:00, basically, for our adults, and then our youth play on Thursdays. So if you have nothing going on, you want to drop in and see some fun, or you want to volunteer, or you want to be part of the action, just come on out and just say, "I want to, I want to get involved," and we'll stick you somewhere. So that way you can have a little bit of fun and see what it's all about. It's for kids with disabilities and adults with disabilities, and they are a blast. Some of our leadership, youth have come out there, I think Peyton, I don't know, Jalen, maybe, I think, and they can tell you that, I think they were kind of sort of surprised about how fun it really wound up being for them as well. So anyhow, Tuesdays and Thursdays until November the 3rd.
No comment.
I'd just like to thank everyone who took the time out to vote for Annette Howell Center. I just want to thank you guys for that, they appreciate it.
We got awarded. We got awarded.
On Friday at 10:30 at the Alhous Judicial Building, there will be a walk recognizing recovery, and I'm sure if I asked people to raise their hand, if people in their family or people that they know that have some type of dependency, drugs or alcohol, we would see many, many hands. It's quite a worthy cause to bring note to that. So 10:30 on Friday at the Alhous Judicial Building. Thank you.
Taste of, sorry, Taste of Downtown Valdosta, October 13th, correct? Correct, Mark? Just put that on your calendar, $20 a ticket, everyone needs to come out and support Downtown Valdosta. We always talk about how we need to have more events and more things downtown, and we provide those things, and now we just need folks to show up. So October 13th, $20, gets you a good time.
Councilman, your announcement, back to this floor.
And I was just going to say, and I appreciate that, because there's a ton of things going on downtown in October. We've got it posted on the website now, we're going to have a lot of fun, and we're going to have a city function that we'll get to you probably a little bit later, and what we're going to do, and expand something we'd had in the past, and, but yeah, we've got one more council meeting to put all that out there, but there's a, please look at the website, Brandy's website as well as the city's, because every weekend, there's something happening exciting.
Oh, we are here, and I would like to say, Mr. Ben Slaughter, thank you for coming out to hear me do my first mayor pro temp, and you're going to tell me how I done before we leave. Thank you, sir, and I know you graded me, so for a German, we're going to hear a motion for our...
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Speeding is adjourned.